Thirty seconds. I certainly want to welcome everyone here to this meeting of the Durham City Council, which I'm calling to order tonight at seven o'clock on May the 4th. Well, welcome everyone who is watching us on whatever medium you're using to watch this meeting. We welcome you to this meeting of the Durham City Council. Another extraordinary meeting, and again, we thank our tech staff and our public affairs staff for all the work to make it possible for us to not only have this meeting, but to broadcast it widely on a number of channels. And we're very, very grateful of that. I want to, before our moment of silence, I want us to think about our we've had 24 people in Durham now who have passed away from COVID-19. And I hope we can think of them and keep them as in our thoughts during our moment of silent meditation. I also want to mention the passing of Mr. Kenneth Edmonds. Mr. Edmonds was in a long line, a long family line of publishers of The Carolina Times, an incredibly important institution in our community. And Mr. Edmonds passed away in this, this week. So I want to remember him as well. So we all please join me now in a moment of silence. Thank you so much. And now, Councilmember Reese, I'll ask you if you will please recite the pledge.
Okay, now I'm muted. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it. I'll get there eventually. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Reese. And now we will move to our roll call. Madam Clerk.
Mayor Shul.
Here.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Caballero.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Present.
Councilmember Middleton.
Here.
And Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we'll see if there are any announcements by members of the council. Colleagues, any announcements? Speak up or raise your hand. Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, colleagues. Good evening to you. Good evening to everyone that's watching. Mr. Mayor, this is a very emotional start to the week here in Durham on a number of accounts. You've already spoken to one of them. I did want to give voice to the incredible amount of sadness and angst over the closing of Northgate Mall. Many of us knew that this was inevitable. It was coming, but certainly COVID-19 has accelerated it. And I just want to give voice to generations really of people that went through the rites of passage of adolescents at Northgate Mall. It wasn't just about shopping. And to those of our young people that worked out the awkwardness of interpersonal relationships at that place, there's a lot of emotional connection there. I do want to say that in meeting with the developers, the new owners of the mall, one of the constant themes that I know my colleagues sounded out, and I certainly sounded out, was assuring that aid would be given to businesses that were displaced. Aid in terms of relocation and continuation of business activity. I'm calling and hoping tonight that the developer, although we know they're under immense stress, financial stress because of COVID-19, would still honor their commitment to provide as much assistance as possible to displaced businesses. Folks who are already dealing with business interruptions, who now have added to that, an effective eviction. And I don't mean that on fault of the developer, but they basically were out of business because of COVID-19. And now essentially need a new place to do business when they come back. So I want to encourage the developer to, and the new owner, to, to, to the best of their ability to lean into their commitment to provide that assistance to those displaced merchants. I also anecdotally understand that the owner has been reassigning some of the now unemployed workers at Northgate Mall to other properties that they own. That's anecdotal. If they are, I want to commend them for doing that, but I also want to push them tonight. I'm sure they're monitoring to do that as comprehensively and as equitably as possible for all of the employees that are there at the mall. So with that, I know there's a great deal of sadness and a great deal of concern throughout the entire business community here in Durham, and I just want to give voice to that tonight. Secondly, Mr. Mayor, you spoke to the incredible legacy of Kenneth Edmonds. And there's a great deal of grief and sadness and pride. Not only the African-American community tonight, but journalism community. You're a journalism guy, Mr. Mayor. One of the most effective weapons that folk can use against an oppressed people is taking their voice, denying them access to information, controlling the narrative, and controlling the information that they receive. And the black press has been in the vanguard of pushing back against those type of tools that have so often been employed against the oppressed. And Kenneth Edmonds was right there. He succeeded, of course, the legendary Austin, Louis Austin, in assuming the mantle of leadership at The Carolina Times. I remember reading The Carolina Times to get my information, and then one day started showing up in the pages of The Carolina Times. So it's a deeply important piece of history, not only for me, but for so many in the African-American community here in Durham, around the state of North Carolina and indeed in the country, that black press is indeed a, an endangered species, independent black press. So I just want to honor the memory of Kenneth Edmonds tonight and give voice to the collective grief and pride of the work that he did for the city. So just want to say hail and farewell to our brother, Kenneth Edmonds, and may God bless and comfort his family. May God bless and protect our city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Middleton. Are there any other announcements? Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. I appreciate Councilmember Middleton's comments, and I want to associate myself with them. And noting that along those lines of the business community reeling in, in the face of this pandemic, I noted previously, I'm sorry, that there was a fund that the community was working on on the side of those most vulnerable in this pandemic in business. And I want to say that we're finally up and running. We have had the support of North Carolina Central join, the School of Business join, and I look forward to having more conversations with council on how to be supportive beyond just as a, in a community. So I'm doing this through Episcopal United Against Racism within Poverty Durham and Communities Partnership, and Resilient Ventures with North Carolina Central. But I would like to figure out how we do this as a council with the county to support some of the small businesses in our community, because it is important to note that a lot of of our small businesses will not qualify for those PPP funding, I'm sorry, the Payment Protection Program funding and the economic, I'm not going to mess that EI DL up, but I did write it down. But the, the funding that has been made available federally and through our state, noting that the CARES funding that's limited to by population size. I mean, I think that there's definitely a big lift that we're going to have to do and we're going to have to make here in our city. And I want to make sure that we're, we're, we're letting folks know that we are, we are hearing you and we're here and we will not be turning away. And along the lines of Councilmember Middleton's comments around losing such a, a great part of our community and and noting that Mr. Edmonds, I, I mean, I recently met him and just knowing the power that he pushed or propelled through The Carolina Times, it's going to be hard to replace that. And I want to note that it's important that we support our local students who are in this field. There's not a lot of, of press here locally, professionally. And so we become, we've become more reliant on what we do have, and that's just not in the, I mean, it's almost as if all press is becoming a relic. And it's just unfortunate for democracy. So I just want to note that it's, it's, it's becoming an issue to note that this, this loss just kind of put it into perspective, just what's happening as, as, as we lose another in our community. So I want to thank you for that and just share, share the update. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. And we'll look forward to hearing more. If there's a website already for the fund, let us know that. We've all been getting lots of emails from folks on small business assistance, and I'm looking forward to hearing more from our administration on that. All right. Any other announcements?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank council members Middleton and Freeman for bringing those issues up. I just wanted to point out that with respect to Northgate Mall, the folks who live in the Waltown community directly adjacent to Northgate have been organizing for quite some time around the future of that property. And I hope that we can all continue to work with them and the developers as we move forward to make sure that Northgate continues to be and carries forward the legacy of what a, what a great asset it has been to our city and our, and our people. I just wanted to call out the folks at Waltown who've been working so hard on this issue for the better part of the last year. I know that, I think many, or if not all of us, have met with them within the last six months or so to talk about their vision for Northgate. And so I'm, I'm just excited to see that partnership go forward. But obviously, the untimely closure of Northgate causes considerable amount of distress for the business owners that work there. And I appreciate Councilmember Middleton bringing up those businesses and lifting them up. Also wanted to highlight what you said, Mr. Mayor, that our staff is hard at work on developing the Durham, the city of Durham's response to the needs for our small business community. And I know that we're going to be hearing more about that in the days and weeks to come. And appreciate all the messages that we've received from Durham residents and others who have reached out to us by email in the last couple of weeks to talk about the special needs of our small business community and look forward to working with staff to get that program into the field as soon as possible. Last thing I wanted to say, Mr. Mayor, the last announcement I wanted to make is the days are long and the years are short. My daughter, L, my older daughter, turned 12 years old today. That seems inconceivable to me, but here we are. And I know that each of you has, I'm sorry, all, most of you have children that have surpassed that age already. So you've been, you have been where I am. But I'll just say that one of the best things about my job is that I get to work with amazing people like the five of you to build a city for the future of our children. And days like today remind me of why this is the best job I've ever had. So anyway, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Reese. And I'm glad to hear that L is a Duke fan.
Mr. Mayor, I will always hold you personally responsible for teaching her the Duke Fight Song. It's unacceptable, and you did it, so.
Just saying.
Yeah, you'll get yours, I promise.
I'm just.
Bye, everybody. Okay.
All right. Are there any more announcements by members of the council? All right. Hearing none, I'm going to move on to priority items by the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone, and certainly happy birthday to L. There is one priority item from the city manager's office this evening. That's agenda item number 18, proposed sale of property located at 1415 West Club Boulevard to Garmin Homes LLC. This matter was discussed at the work session, and pursuant to the council's request, the motion and the agenda memo have been updated to clarify that the proceeds from the sale of this property will be deposited into the city's dedicated housing fund. And that's the only item I have for this evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager. Madam, Madam Attorney.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of council. The city attorney's office has no priority items tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. I do have a priority item. My item is to discuss the board's committees and commission guidelines probably at the end of the meeting.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, and we will do that. Thank you for bringing that up. And we've received a copy of those guidelines from Councilmember Caballero and that she and Mayor Protem had worked on as our little committee on that, and appreciate that. And we'll take that up at the end of the meeting. Thank you. We will now move to our consent agenda. The consent agenda can be approved by a single vote of the council. Any council member or member of the public can pull an item from the consent agenda, in which case it will be taken up and voted upon at the end of the meeting. The consent agenda, item one, approval of city council minutes. Item two, citizens advisory committee appointment. Item three, Durham Bus, Tickle and Pedestrian Commission appointments. Item four, Durham City County Appearance Commission reappointments. Item six, Durham Performing Arts Center Oversight Committee appointments. Item seven, Durham Workers Rights Commission appointments. Item eight, participatory budgeting steering committee appointments. Item nine, Recreation Advisory Commission appointments. Item 10, contract with Housing for New Hope to serve as the Unsheltered Coordinating Agency. Item 11, Amendment 1 to CN 14605, Lake Mickey and Little River Raw Water Pump Station improvements design phase. Item 12, West Club Boulevard Corridor Utility Rehabilitation, Amendment 1 to the Professional Engineering Services Contract. Item 13, bid report, March 2020. Item 17, proposed lease for Police District Number 1 Substation at 915 Holloway Street. Item 18, proposed sale of property located at 1415 West Club Boulevard to Garmin Homes LLC. Item 19, second member to the Processing and Marketing Recyclable Materials Contract. Item 20, Durham County Transit Plan. You have heard the consent agenda, and I will accept the motion for its approval.
Mr. Mayor, just one item, item 20. I didn't want to pull it. I just wanted to make a note to say that I appreciate that the workforce statistics were added.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. And I move that the agenda be accepted.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We approve the consent agenda. I'm going to ask everyone to raise their hands so we can all see it. The clerks, we have some new rules that are, don't apply for. All right, Madam Clerk, I'm seeing everybody's hand. This, the eyes have it, and the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody.
Very much.
We're now going to move to our only other item on the agenda, which is the discussion of the guidelines for digital operation of our boards and commissions, which we had discussed at our work session, and we had asked Mayor Protem and Councilmember Caballero to please come up with some guidelines for us, which they have done, and email to us. And I will now open this up for any discussion, or maybe one of you all might want to start us off, either Mayor Protem or Councilmember Caballero. Would you like to start us off and just tell us a little bit about the guidelines? Can't, can't hear you, Jillian.
Sorry, can you hear me now? Microphone issues. Yeah, so Javier, Councilmember Caballero and I wrote up just some brief guidelines to think through the ways that boards and commissions could meet virtually over the next few months. We were hoping to provide options for our boards to continue to meet if they would like to, but to allow flexibility for members who prefer not to meet virtually, for boards who prefer not to meet virtually, to have, to have the option to not meet. And of course, that wouldn't count against anyone's attendance requirements for, for their boards. We also wanted to make sure that boards don't meet in person. So we would like to give boards the option to meet if they meet virtually, but to not allow in-person meetings of boards for the next several months. And based on our conversations, decided that we would have, use Zoom. There is another platform that the city has been using, but Zoom is a little bit easier for people to access. The apps are free and, you know, publicly available, and the city already has some licenses for Zoom that we can share with our boards and commissions. Our biggest concern was making sure that we're in compliance with North Carolina Open Meetings laws. And so part of the training that we propose to do with board chairs is making sure that they're all aware of the noticing and the requirements for, of open meeting requirements, which have previously largely been handled by the clerk's office. Want to make sure that the boards are aware that they can't just set up digital meetings and meet on their own, that they have to be noticed, and that notes have to be made publicly available. That's all I got. Councilmember Caballero, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, and the city clerk, I don't know if we got responses from everyone, but did send out a poll. That was one of the things that we asked is to see, you know, interest, how available people's technology was, how comfortable they would be using a virtual platform if there was somebody within their committee that could act as a, what we're calling a tech liaison, who could walk folks through who may struggle to download Zoom and help set that up on their, all of this obviously done virtually. And I know that city clerk's office did send that out. The bit that I saw, I don't think we got a ton of responses, but there were several commissions who did respond, seemed amenable, and, and had the desire to meet and had, you know, also knowing that there could be somebody on their commission that could act as that tech liaison. But she may want to comment further around what kind of response we got.
Thank you all both very much. Madam Clerk, would you like to comment on the response to your poll?
Sure. I received responses from approximately 10 boards and committees, two of which, one is the Planning Commission, the other is the Board of Adjustments. And those boards in particular conduct quasi-judicial proceedings as well as public hearings, and that is something that has not been done with some of our peer cities in North Carolina as of yet. Raleigh is expected to conduct their first public hearing on May 11th. So we should have more information about how that would go. But the other boards that did reach out, the majority of them do have the capabilities to conduct the Zoom meetings and the willingness to do so. So I think that it's really, the ball is in your court when it comes to considering if it's something that you want to proceed with or not. But like I said, the majority, the overwhelming, overwhelming majority of the boards and their members are willing to participate in virtual meetings.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you for the extra work that you all are having to do in the clerk's office to make this happen, and we know it's a burden and we appreciate it. Okay, colleagues, any discussion at this point of the guidelines? I was very comfortable with them. I think they were very much in the spirit that we had discussed last week. And, and is there anyone that has a particular guideline that they would like to discuss, or any, any issues around this at all? Madam Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to bring to the council's attention that, you know, the governor did sign Senate Bill 704 today, which created some new processes for remote meetings for all levels of government. And we might just want to be mindful as we're kind of firming up some of these processes. One requirement is that remote meetings shall be simultaneously streamed live online so that simultaneous live audio and video, if any, any public meeting is available to the public. So I know that's something that we've been doing for council meetings. Whether we're equipped to do that for our boards, commissions, and committees, I'm not sure. I know that it takes a lot of staff, labor, and effort, and talent to pull that off. So please keep that in mind. And I think that's the most critical aspect right now. There were also provisions for, for quasi-judicial hearings, which we can discuss at a later time. But for the purposes of the council, boards, committees, and commissions, I just wanted you all to be aware of that requirement. I have not had a chance to really dig into all of the legislative changes, but we will send you guys an update on that as soon as we can.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Let me ask the city manager, and then I'll issue Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly, that latest nuance from the law is an issue that we would kind of need to follow up on. Twenty to 30 boards and commissions, potentially, it would be literally impossible for our public affairs staff to support that. We are certainly prepared to support the Planning Commission activity and the Board of Adjustment. I met on that today. But if we had a requirement to stream the other boards and commissions, I think that's going to present a pretty significant challenge for us. Also, just another necessary minor item, but the city does have a number of licenses for the Zoom platform. A number of them are committed. I think we have a total of seven other licenses that departments can basically check out, so to speak, if they want to use them. I think we're going to either have, have some conversation about how those licenses are managed with this many boards and commissions that might want to utilize them. We would not be in a position of granting a license to a particular board or commission. We would have to kind of library them in some fashion, but we would need to be sensitive to, to how often they could be used or the prioritization of, of their use, acknowledging that while all our boards serve a purpose, the, the variety of purposes are, are, you know, differ. And so either the city may need to purchase additional, a full licenses, if that many additional boards want to pursue these opportunities, but maybe that's a moot point if we can't get past the, the broadcast issue that the city attorney brought up.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did discuss the issue of having the meetings being publicly viewable. In our, in our guidelines, there is a requirement for them, for the meetings to be viewable publicly online. It is not, in order for them to be viewable publicly online, it is not necessary for them to be streamed to Facebook or YouTube. The Zoom platform has a feature whereby observers can view the meeting in real time by just clicking on a Zoom link. There's a webinar functionality that would actually probably be best for boards and commissions to use rather than a, just an open meeting where anyone can join, because then just the board and commission members are viewable and are able to unmute their microphones and speak, and everyone else is an observer. And they can choose to allow observers to speak or not depending. But the, that feature, I think, would satisfy the, that requirement. And I was going to ask our city attorney if she could weigh in on that. So that's great. That shouldn't be a problem. The issue around licenses, we looked at the, the times that different boards and commissions meet and determined that if everyone were to stick to their regular schedules, which of course, we know that doesn't always happen. But if everyone were to stick to their regular, regular schedules, the maximum number of boards that would ever be meeting at the same time is three. And so a library system would require a maximum of three licenses be available for boards and commissions at any time, and that was like one day out of the month. Most, at most times, there will only be one board meeting, and very few times, two, and then once, three, over the course of a month. Any boards that have committees that wanted to meet or special meetings would have to be figured out, but based on their existing published schedules, the, the timing is such that they don't overlap too much.
Thank you. Could I ask the city attorney, do you agree with Mayor Protem that the, what she has described would meet the requirements of the law or, or not?
I would assume so, Mayor Shul. I mean, the statute is not specific in terms of what particular platform it has to be streamed out over. And I know that for council meetings, we go above and beyond what's required to create public access. But I, Mayor Protem is correct that if the Zoom invitation allows, you know, folks to not only, but it, it is streaming out through that Zoom platform for others to observe the meeting, I think that probably does meet the requirement here.
Thank you so much. All right. Any other comments or questions for our committee or any comments? Councilmember Freeman?
I think just a comment to say I do believe that the platform also allows for question and answer as well. So it's just not observable, but they can actually interact if they have a question. It would just need to be something that details who that person is. And I'm, I'm not sure if that's a staff member or someone on the committee, but it would be nice to make sure that that person is available. More like tracking, tracking who, who you're reaching out to, or who's, who's the voice in these committee conversations with the public, so. You're muted.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. Any more comments? Councilmember Middleton?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. And I thank to the city attorney for that, for that caveat. But that caveat notwithstanding, I do want to just come in and thank the J Team, Counselor Javier and Counselor Gillian for the work that they've done for running point on this. There were two paramount issues, I think, that we discussed. Mr. Mayor, you alluded to them. One, not to mandate the meetings and two, not to meet out any penalty if you can't make it. And they kept faith with both of those issues and I think they did a great job. So this is my thanks and commendation to them for running point for us on this. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Reese?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Mayor Protem and Councilmember Caballero for putting together what are some pretty good comprehensive guidelines for allowing our boards, committees and commissions to move forward in a virtual way, at least through, I think it's like August 31st, is that right? Oddly enough, that's my other daughter's birthday, but never mind about that.
Duke Fan?
Yeah, no, not at all, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we've restricted her access to you just for that very reason. But I did want to ask, also wanted to thank our clerk for reaching out to our boards, committees and commissions to talk about kind of their readiness to move forward on a virtual platform. But I did want to ask Madam Clerk if any of the feedback you got back from the boards, committees and commissions talked about whether or not the, I guess, the person you were interacting with, and presumably the chair of the, of the board, had done any outreach to their board members or fellow commission members to determine their ability and wherewithal during this ridiculous time we're all in to engage in the work of their board, committee, commission? I think one of the things that I've continued to be concerned about when we talk about restarting that part of our government process is that the ability to engage in the work of a citizen-appointed board is, is in direct proportion to the ability to have the technology to do that remotely or the time and mental energy to dedicate to it. And those are often correlated in very dangerous ways with wealth and race in this, in this society and in this city. And so the extent to which we open up this process on a voluntary basis for people that can, if they want to, who have the ability to do it, is fantastic because our boards, committees, commissions add so much to our governing process, the life of our city, the engagement of our residents. But I do, I do worry, does opening it up in this way, so that, such that it is only virtual through August 31st, does that privilege the voices on these boards, committees and commissions that have not only the technological wherewithal, but also the time and mental energy to devote to it? And I'm wondering if, Madam Clerk, if you heard anything from the folks who reached out to you about those issues? Number one, and number two, if the Mayor Protem and Councilmember Caballero could speak to that specific issue, that would be great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember. I did ask if everyone had the ability and the wherewithal to, to meet, not only technically, but also if they had the opportunity, you know, with their current life situation. So I did ask that and the majority of the folks said they did have the ability and the capacity to meet.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Yeah, that, you know, that's always a concern and is something that we discussed. I think the unfortunate reality that we have not been able to increase socioeconomic diversity on our boards as much as we would like. And we're therefore, you know, we're considering the budget amendment, which we're now, of course, putting on hold to stipend board and commission members in order to get more, more class diversity. The current reality is that the majority of our board members are, are middle-class people who have resources and have access. There are, of course, people who are not. And we, you know, want there to be more people who are, are less able to serve on boards and commissions by virtue of not having time to donate, not have, you know, having to work and having unpredictable schedules and all of the, you know, issues that come with, with having less privilege. I think that we currently are in a situation where that's not as big of a problem as it could be. And based on our survey results, I think that's what we've found. Another reason that we chose Zoom is that it's very easy to access, for example, on a smartphone. And so it's, the technological barrier isn't as high as for some other platforms. Of course, the time issue and the, you know, issue that many of us are facing of, you know, having children climbing over us all day long and not having the mental space to deal with these sorts of things are, are going to continue to be present for board members. I think that each board should really consider their ability to, to continue to meet and to include everyone in the process of deciding whether to hold virtual meetings and that the board chairs and staff liaisons should check in with their folks and make sure that, that that's, that they can, you know, mitigate against that problem as much as possible.
Councilmember Caballero?
Yeah, that was also part of the, thank you, Mayor Schul. Part of the reason we wanted to have like a tech liaison is so that we had a dedicated person on each board or commission help be able to walk folks through if they don't necessarily have that tech savviness. So the point of that role is, and I think it's listed in the guidelines, that there is expectation that at least 24 hours before a meeting, anyone who needs help downloading the app, getting access, testing it out, all of those things would have that support. And I think that that was one of the reasons we included that role. Additionally, if folks want to go this way, we could say, you know, do one full cycle as boards and commissions and we would like a report back so we can see how it goes. And if it looks like it wasn't a good solution, then we could reevaluate.
Mr. Mayor, just that, first of all, those are outstanding responses and I think they alleviate a number of my concerns. I'll also say that to the extent that this is a problem, it's not, it's not unique to the COVID-19 outbreak or the use of remote meetings. The fact is that requiring people to show up in person at a meeting, often at City Hall or some other place, is its own barrier to entry for many of our residents and one that we have been looking for creative ways to, to overcome for folks to broaden board service to more types of people. I will, I will just say that assuming that these guidelines move forward, I would just strongly urge, I guess it'll be our clerk who distributes these guidelines to our boards, committees and commissions, just strongly urge, Madam Clerk, if you would, please make sure that the board chairs and whatever technological liaison is appointed, that they are made aware that Zoom has a purely telephone option and that folks who don't have the, the equipment, the hardware, the technological expertise, whatever it takes, whatever it takes to get up on the video Zoom, can always just call in. As we learned our very first virtual city council meeting with my colleague, Councilmember Middleton, that's bandwidth issues in his home, was able to call in and finish a very important set of remarks during our meeting. So I just want to make sure that that avenue is highlighted specifically for our board chairs and the technological liaison so that members who want to engage in the process that either don't have the technology or don't have the wherewithal to put it all together, can still call in and be involved in it. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I had to say about it.
Thank you, Councilmember Reese. Councilmember Freeman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Councilmember Reese. I appreciate you bringing those comments forward and recognizing that was part, that was most of our conversation in work session around making sure that there was an equitable way to make sure that people were engaged, not just in the meeting, like not just from the board side, but from the public side as well. And making sure that there's accountability on the side of the boards that have held, held meetings already and making sure that that information is publicly available to folks in the community so that it doesn't look like it's a select few folks working on an item and, you know, and no one knows what's going on. I mean, I get that sense from folks and I just try to stamp it out as much as possible by making sure that this is transparent and is open as possible. So I really appreciate the effort that you put into making sure that, that folks understand how Zoom works and how accessible and pandemic-friendly, I guess it is. I, I think that there, there is a, I mean, I want to, I want to back up to the point where I think Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Johnson mentioned that it's not incumbent upon us or not encouraging boards to meet. And that it is, you know, an entirely stressful time on its own and, and noting that there are some who, who will want to lean in and continue to, you know, move forward with business as usual and there are others who cannot. It's, it's just, I really want to make sure that the city clerk is acknowledging that for our board chairs and each of the committees, that this is not a time to, to push in on folks. It's really just kind of checking in with your, with your boards and committees to make sure that folks are okay. So even though there's, even though there's an option and it's not a requirement, is, is really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Councilwoman Reese for, for basically giving voice to what I think is the very animated spirit of the equity we work, we do here in our stadium, what we've been talking about for some time. So I want to thank him for a very eloquent voicing of it. I would say that the, insofar as the boards and commissions will be meeting, and insofar as the end result of those boards and commissions is to inform our work, that I think what Charlie has said is really kind of an alley-oop and it's up to us as the council to ultimately pull that alley-oop down. Because we know that these folk are facing these obstacles, insofar as they try and inform, their work product tries to inform our policymaking, we have to be the final bulwark and the final measure of how much weight we should put on those work products, how much emphasis we should put on those work products and allow to inform our work because we're aware of everything that Charlie just said. So I would just, I want to echo and associate myself with his comments and just kind of remind us of our challenge that as we, as the final decision-makers for this city, are always mindful that whatever our boards and commissions are asking us to do, we have to interrogate their work product and interrogate how many people were involved in that process. That's seeking to inform our process ultimately. So thanks to my colleague and, and thanks for the reminder to all of us just to how serious a charge that's on us as leaders of this city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Are there any more comments? If not, I will accept a motion that we approve the use of these guidelines.
So moved?
Thank you. There's a motion and a second that we approve these guidelines. And I'm going to ask everyone now, all in favor, please raise your hand so that the clerk can see it on the screen. Apparently mine is not raising.
Oh, you mean the virtual?
There we go.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The eyes have it and the motion passes unanimously. Colleagues, there being no more business to come before this meeting, I'm going to declare this meeting adjourned at 7:42. Great to see everybody. I'll see you all on Thursday at the work session.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
Good evening, everybody. Happy birthday, Al.